Good evening. The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council from March the 6th, 2018 is now in session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the people of America, the United States of America, and to the people of our country, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've just experienced a pretty bad northeaster. Is my mic working tonight? Can you hear me back there? Much worse than we thought in our area, but looking at some of the beach conditions and some of the soundside conditions, it was a little worse than I think we thought it was. The people in New England got hit a lot harder, so keep them in your thoughts this evening during a moment of silence. Thank you. Council, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda's been approved, Sheila. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, council. Tab one in your book.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have a consent agenda approved. This time I'll call the town planner, I'm sorry, Wes. How are you? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I have a report for you all for tonight for the month of February. There were 12 zoning permits issued, 46 building permits issued. Those consisted of one new single-family dwelling, one addition, six remodels, one repair, one addition remodel, six accessories, and 30 others. There are currently 24 single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees we collected in February was $11,424.20. With respect to the town planning board, they will be holding their next meeting on March 19th. The board will be considering two variance applications that were actually continued from the February 20th meeting, which both are seeking relief on the side setback requirements on two 50-foot wide lots at 155 Ocean Boulevard. There's another variance application also seeking relief. In this case, it'll be on the rear setback requirements at 46 Spindrift Trail. And lastly, at the March 19th planning board meeting, the board will also continue its consideration of a zoning tax amendment application submitted by Southern Shores Crossing LLC to amend Section 36-163, all-street parking requirements to allow for shared parking in commercial areas. That completes my report, Mr. Mayor. If any questions, I can try to answer them.
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Number two on your list, is that the gentleman that works at Coastal Studies Institute?
Number two on the...
Mr. McLendon, yeah.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Interesting.
Yes, sir. Check of halt. Yes, sir.
Planning board, meeting time on the 19th, was it?
5:30 PM. March 19th at 5:30.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
This time I'll call on our police chief, David Cole. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The Southern Shores Police Department's report for the month of February 2018. As you can see, we had 1,616 calls for service. The incidents, which are actually the crimes that were reported, we had 18 of those. You can see the breakdown. One was a break-in and entering. We had five larcenies, two fraud, one possession of stolen property, a vandalism, excuse me, three drug violations, one child abuse. Under the criminal arrest, we had three arrests for the larcenies, one for the possession of stolen property. The three drug violations were arrests, and two people were arrested for the child abuse. Total 14 arrests for the month of February. Motor vehicle accidents, we had three. And then under the citations, officers conducted 54 traffic stops, written citations, they handed out 25, and another 29 warning citations. And we had zero ordinance violations. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ed Limbacher, our fire chief. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, everybody. The fire department report for the month of February. Fire department responded to a total of 32 calls, pretty simple breakdown, one structure fire, nine patient assist, 22 EMS calls, one each motor vehicle combustible or flammable gas, gas leak, service call, smoke odor or smoke, public service, and smoke scare, and then three alarms. Again, 42 calls for the month of February. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Town manager's report. Good evening, Peter.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just updating you tonight on some of the capital improvement projects that you authorized for this year. Palmetto Lane rebuild project is underway and is on schedule for the eastern half of Palmetto Lane. The Clamshell Trail improvement rebuild project is underway and it is on schedule. The Skyline Road stormwater improvement project at the intersection has not commenced yet, however, it's on schedule. Yopon Trail, recall that we just got the camel permit in for that project. The bidding is out on a section of bulkhead improvement. The state has waived moratorium for us to do that small piece of bulkheading in the curving of the streets, so that is out for bid now, so we can get that underway by the end of this spring. And that is just a short section of the bulkhead, and we'll have to wait until the moratorium is lifted in the fall to commence with the rest of the bulkhead improvements. As far as the current storm, as always, we'll wait till the ocean lays down before we determine if anything else needs to be done by the town on the beach out there. We did inspect yesterday for Division Coastal Management for erosion effects and reported that to DCM. So I'll be glad to try to answer any questions anybody might have on operations.
This short section of bulkhead, is this the northern end?
It's on the northern end, in the apex of the existing curve of the street.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
That short section.
Any other questions for the town manager? Thank you, Peter. Town attorney?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning board report. Mr. Williams. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council, my report's in two parts tonight. The larger part of it will be during the public hearing for zoning tax amendment 18-02, and this part's going to be very short. I just thought I would mention a resignation on the planning board. I don't normally do this, but this is a resignation of Jay Russell. And in checking the town records, Jay, at the time of his resignation, has served one month short of 17 years. And I can't say there are many public servants on a volunteer basis that do that. That ends my report. Any questions?
Counsel? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
This time I'll call for general public comment. I should say I'll open general public comment. Good evening, Lori.
You'll now hear from the better, I mean, other half of Sam Williams. I am Lori Williams, and I'm here representing the League of Women Voters of Dare County, and I'm here to present you with the brand-new citizens guide in a bright color that I'm sure you will never lose on your desk this year. We would like to thank, acknowledge the county commissioners, towns, including Southern Shores, many businesses and other, you know, people here in the county that have donated for us to be able to publish this. This guide is contributed or is published under the auspices of the State League Citizens' Education Fund. And the citizens guide provides lots of useful information that you cannot find anywhere else. It is not in the phone book, it is not anywhere else if any of you have tried to find some of this. It lists all sorts of government officials, it lists a lot of entities around the county as far as schools, services, post offices, emergency numbers, and they're all here in this handy-dandy little guide that we publish every year. This year, we published 7,100 copies of this, which is more than we normally do because we had more contributions this year. And the guides are currently being distributed throughout the county from Duck down to Hatteras to Wantchees to Manio. You know, the ladies of the league and the men are in their cars delivering this throughout the county. The guide, you have received or should have received your bulk distribution. The towns have it, post offices have it, the Pheasant Center, the Baum Center, so there are lots of places people can get this. And something that we're doing new this year, we are publishing a Spanish version. It's a limited distribution because this is the first year we're trying this, and it's not yet available. The translation is currently being done by a daughter of a league member, but I think that might be something that will be useful to certain people here in the county, a Spanish version. The guide is also up on our webpage, so you can also find it there. And now I have to do the little pitch for the league. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to our community's voters. And membership in the league is open to everyone, to men and women, and we do have quite a few men that are members of the league. Thank you for your support, and I'm sure you will find the guide useful.
Thank you, Lori. They're available in town hall, by the way. We have them here.
Libraries, post offices, things like that. You're not going to lose it on your desk with your office, color.
Any old business, council? Not sure on the agenda, but in case there is some. Item A under new business, beach assessment report. This time I'd like to introduce Mr. Ken Wilson from Aptim Coastal Plan and Engineering of North Carolina. Good evening, Ken.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, council. Good to be back up here. Trying to get right to this. Okay, great. Yeah, so I picked a good time to come up and talk about beaches, I guess. Good timing after the storm had just come through, but what I want to talk about mostly tonight is the conclusion of a study that was agreed or that was executed by the town back last January of 2017, I believe. But the situation was we were going to wait until the project was built over the summer and the fall, and then after that, we would survey the beach. We would survey all of Southern Shores as part of that. And then we did an assessment of the shoreline change and the volume change along the town's shoreline using historical data. So I'll go briefly over the goals of the study, talk about the data that was used in the assessment. We'll talk a little bit about the spatial and the temporal limits of where the assessment was, which was really dictated by what historical data we had available, the types of assessment that we did, and then we'll get into some results and we'll get into final recommendations. So the goals of the study were to establish this town-wide baseline survey for future monitoring. And then when we got into the study, there's actually some data for the southern part of the town, a good chunk of the southern part of the town that was done back in the early 2000s. We had done a couple of profiles up on the north end that kind of bled in from some work we did with the town of Duck, but now this survey was the first full-townwide survey that we can use as a future baseline. We wanted to determine the rates of erosion, the rates of shoreline change along the town's limits, evaluate both the long-term and short-term trends, and then provide the town with some information that could be used in planning with respect to managing the shoreline moving forward. The data used in the assessment, this is just kind of a list, is also outlined in the report that was provided back in February as a draft. After this meeting, we'll go back. If there are any comments, we can address those comments and we'll finalize that report. But this is just a breakdown of basically the five different data sets that we had to work from. And then as far as spatial and temporal limits, rather than going through this, this is actually in the executive summary. It's also detailed why we chose these different areas and these different time periods, again, based on the historic data. I figured I would show it graphically. So here we've got a map of the entire town of Southern Shores. For the area that's highlighted in red, that's the area from about Third Street, the northernmost limit of that red line is around Third Street. We call it Station Minus 150 Plus 00, so it's 15,000 feet north of the southern town line. From there to the southern town line, the Corps of Engineers actually did a few surveys from October 2004 to October 2006. And then our latest survey that was done in December 2017, we were able to look at shoreline change and volume changes from 2004 to 2006, and then from 2006 all the way to 2017. So we've got those two time periods along that stretch of Southern Shores. We also wanted to concentrate in on what we call the fill area. This is the area in which fill was placed during the summer/fall project along Southern Shores. This is basically the three profiles, starting at the southern town limit and extending about 2,000 feet into the town on the southern side. So those three profiles, we go through and we talk about trends. There's a little bit more data there because we were involved since about 2013 in surveying the town of Killdoble Hills, I mean Kitty Hawk. So we also have a May 2015 survey. We've got a survey from June 2017, which was right before the project went in, and then obviously we have the townwide survey from December 2017. And then I also talked a little bit about up on the north side. Because of our work with the town of Duck, there was a 2013 and a 2015 survey that was done along the town of Duck and extended 2,000 feet into the town of Southern Shores. So we used those profiles, specifically the ones from 2013, to get a feel for the trends on the north side of town from 2013 to 2017. And then we had this small stretch that had never been surveyed previously, so for that stretch, we've got three new profiles that we'll be able to compare, like I said, the entire town in future events. So I talked a little bit about the types of assessment that we did. Really, we're looking at kind of three different assessments. We look at the shoreline change, which is basically a linear change. So on this diagram here, what we have is we have the blue line is basically a cross-section of the beach. So we've got our dune up here, we're getting into the dry sand beach in and around here, down around the water line here, and then we've got a small bar out here during this conditional survey. There's actually a little bit of a depression out here, and then we've got another bar further offshore, and that goes all the way out to about minus 24, minus 30 feet of water. We also have this other survey that's in June 2017, the red line, and basically to look at the shoreline change, we pick an elevation. For this assessment, we use the mean high-water contour, which is plus 1.2 feet, reference to the North American vertical datum if you're survey. That's somewhat interesting. But in general, it's that high-water contour, where on average, the high-water, the still level of the tide would come up to over the course of a period of time, average. So we look at where that contour was on the May 2015 profile, and we look at where that same contour was on June 2017, and we measure that distance. And so on this survey, we would say that between May 2015 and June 2017, the shoreline change was about 64 feet. This contour had moved landward about 64 feet. So we'll go through and we'll talk about what that means averaged across the project areas and over different time periods. We also look at the total volume change. Now, you guys can go out there and, you know, look at the beach and what it looked like last week, and you go out there and look at the beach and see what it looks like today, and there are some dramatic changes that have occurred. And you would capture a lot of variability if you just looked at that shoreline change that I showed on that previous slide. But what we really want to track long-term is how much volume is on this profile. So between May 2015 and June 2017, we actually showed that there was, on this specific profile, we showed that, oop, come back. We showed that the shoreline at that contour actually went backward. But if we look at all of the difference in the volume between those two profiles, the red would basically equate to an erosion, and the green is accretion. So what we saw was a lot of sand pulled off of the beach during that period of time, but a lot of that sand was captured in this offshore depression. And so as long as it's above what we call the depth of closure, about the minus 24-foot contour, it's still in the system, but it's moving around a lot. So the storm, typical storm response is you move a lot of sand offshore, it goes and forms these bars, and then during quieter times or calmer waves, you'll get some of that sand start to migrate back up onto shore. And so you want to, because of that variability, you want to know how much sand is truly in the entire system. All right. So one other assessment that we did that was a little out of scope, but I think it adds some value to the study, is what we call this volume envelope. So what we did was we developed this volume envelope, which we defined as the point on the backside of the dune where you reach a minus 20-foot contour. So what we wanted to do was we wanted to capture the entirety of the dune, we wanted to capture the entirety of the dry sand beach, and the rest of this profile that goes out to minus 24. So by creating this envelope, we can compare one profile to the next profile and see, you know, which profiles along the shoreline have less volume than other profiles along the shoreline. Just kind of gives you a flavor for, you know, what areas have more sand, what areas have less sand. All right. So I want to go through the results briefly. Again, we'll talk about this larger area, the comparison between 2004 and 2006, and then 2006 to 2017. This is looking at the shoreline change. So the average shoreline change along this area was a gain of 4.9 feet per year. So between 2004 and 2006, if you were just to look at that mean-high-water line, you were moving seaward, that line was moving seaward about 4.9 feet, almost 5 feet per year over that two-year period. From 2006, and that's represented in those orange bars on the graph. What you'll also notice is there's a lot of variability in there. There are some profiles that that rate is up around 15, 20, even close to 30 feet per year. This one in particular, down at Station Minus 20, that's around skyline or between skyline and Ocean View, I believe. That specific profile between 2004 and 2006 gained almost 25 feet per year or close to 30 feet per year. And some of this variability, obviously, the shorter time period you look at, the more variability you'll have, the longer the time period, you know, the record kind of smooths out. But something else that was going on in this period between 2004 and 2006 was, this was right after, or a few years after Hurricane Isabel had impacted the shoreline in 2003. So there's a good chance that the shoreline is still in a state of, you know, it's out of equilibrium, if you will, and it's adjusting to that. So we've chalked up some of that variability to that. And then the blue bars, again, we're looking at the shoreline change rates, a little bit more stable. Over the long term, the shoreline change was negative 0.4, so basically stable. Over that period between 2006 to 2017, through this 15,000-foot area, if you were to average those rates together, the shoreline change rate is fairly stable. This is the same type of graph, the same two periods of time, but now we're looking at that volume. So not just one contour on the profile, but the whole volume in the curve all the way down to minus 24. Again, that 2004 to 2006 period has a lot of variability in it. If you're to average all those orange bars together, you get about a half a cubic yard per linear foot change in the negative. So you're losing some sand from 2004 to 2006, but it's a very small amount, and on some profiles, you're gaining a lot of sand, on some profiles, you're losing sand. If you look at that record from 2006 to 2017, that's really the key, the volume change over the long period of time. On each of those 15 profiles, we found that there's more volume now than there was in 2006. Now, one thing to point out is this was done after the project. So those profiles at the bottom, probably those three or maybe even four profiles down the bottom, are influenced by the amount of sand that was placed out there and was still in place in December. So I imagine if we had all this data before the project, we would see some erosion rates down there on the southern end. But as you average it through the rest of the project area, the shoreline is essentially fairly stable. All right. So we've got the same sort of analysis for that fill area. Now we're just dialing in. We've got a few more data sets to look at. You can see, again, some of the variability between October 2004 and 2006 is the gray bar. From 2006 to 2015 is that orange bar. And then again, May 2015 to June 2017, you can see big negative shoreline changes along the minus 10 and that zero contour. So we're looking at the southernmost thousand feet of the town, and obviously, we know that there was a lot of erosion, a lot of pullback of that shoreline, especially in 2016, 2017. This is the same thing, but now we're looking at the volume. So it's a major, major volume change, even when we look all the way out to that minus 24-foot contour, lots of volume losses down there on the southern end of the project area in the fill. This is just a couple of photos that we're highlighting. These are in the report, but some photos showing comparisons. This is the same set of stairs that we're showing. This is the condition when we came out and did the survey for Kitty Hawk in 2015. This is that same set of stairs in January 2017. This is the same set of stairs again. This is just a couple of photos that I threw in from another presentation, but this shows a couple of good aerial shots of the project. So this is a couple of days before the project actually went in. This is a few days from the drone, this is a few days before the project went in. Something else to point out, and I'll show a couple of shots right after the project went in, but one of the things we like to see is we like to see these waves breaking offshore. We like to know that there's a bar out there that are tripping those waves up and dissipating some of that wave energy before it gets all the way to the beach. And a lot of times, when you first build these projects, you're sort of covering over some of the existing topography that's out there, you're covering over some of the bars that are out there, if you're really extending that sand out, and it takes some time before those bars get rebuilt. You could go out there today and you could see waves breaking really far offshore, which is a good thing to see that wave energy tripped up. So this is right as they started getting ready with the project. They'd built a pad in Kitty Hawk and starting to work their way underneath of the pier August 2nd, 2017. This is two days later. They've built a good chunk of the Southern Shores project area. This is August 14th, 2017. So now they've completed the section, the 1,500-foot section of Southern Shores, they built the 1,000-foot taper on the end of that, and then you can see... They built the ta, the 1,000-foot taper on the end of that, and then you can see the difference between the, the, the fill density that was placed in Southern Shores and the fill density for the design in, in Kitty Hawk. But if we fast forward about a month in advance into September, now we see that shoreline has started to straighten out. This is pretty typical for these beach projects, that's why a lot of times we put a taper on the end of it. We know that when you bulge out that shoreline, Mother Nature has a tendency of wanting to smooth that out, so that's what we're seeing in that photo. This is September 2017. You'll recall, we had three hurricanes that came through that didn't directly impact the outer banks, but we had some pretty big wave conditions for most of the month of September through three different storms. This is kind of in the middle of one of those, so that water piling up, you can see at the, at the high tide, the waters running up, the waves are running up over top of this berm, starting to fill in, in the back. This is what that looked like about a month later. Looks like kind of a rough day as well, but again, you can start to see these, these bars forming out here. So what I've, what I've shown in this plot, again, that shoreline change that we talked about, showing one specific contour. So this plot basically shows, if I were to, if I were to plot in plan view where that contour falls, if you're looking down on it, on a bird's eye, we've got plotted the October 2004 shoreline, which is this gray shoreline. So this is the position of the shoreline. The reason those lines don't go all the way up is because we're limited, limited by data. So if you'll remember, October 2004 and October 2006, those are the ones that stretch way up to Third Street. So they go a little bit further up. But if you, if you focus in on Third, on the, the southern part of town here, you see a buildup of the shoreline from October 2004 to October 2006, which is this line, and then a pullback in 2015, which is this line. You've got some advance here, but you've got some pullback here. And then the big difference is from this blue line to the red line, which is from 2015 to 2017. And then ultimately, you've got the project in place, which is jumping from the position where this red line is, out to where this orange line is here. All right, so the final area that we'll talk a little bit about is this northern, northern area. Again, we just compared two different data sets, but looking at the shoreline change, we've got some average rates from 2013 to 2017, so almost looking at about four years. We're gaining somewhere between, you know, a half a foot to two feet per year of that mean-high-water contour. Oh, I feel like somebody's growling at me. Speed up. And then here's the volume change. So a little bit of variability, but again, if you look at the scale at the bottom, we're really not talking about a whole lot of volume during that time, some, some, some pretty relatively stable rates of change, and that's just kind of dialing in, looking at that northern area. Then I talked a little bit about the, that volume envelope analysis. So we kind of set, we, we set up a way to, to calculate and compare the volume that's on each, each profile over time. And so this shows that volume, the, the actual volume that's in that, that volume envelope, if you will. And we just drew a line to say, all right, well, what is, what is the average volume in December 2017? So this red line represents where the, represents the, if you were to average all those blue bars together, you would come up with that red line. So on profiles where the blue, the blue bar does not go out to the red line, you're a little bit below average, and where you've gone past the red line, you're a little bit above average. And again, obviously, these bars down here on the southern part have been influenced by the, the Beachville project. So in, in just looking at this and kind of comparing, you know, one part of town to another part of town, we see that there is a section from, I'd have to look back at the report, but from the Station 150 down to minus 60, that has, is sort of in the central part of, of town, that if you were to say, all right, well, where, where do we have the least amount of volume? Just looking at this type of a chart kind of, kind of points that out. So we also went and we kind of did a little bit of an assessment with some existing aerial photos or satellite images, just looking at it in Google Earth. And what we found was, to the north of that section and to the south of that section, the shoreline is characterized more like it is shown in this, in this photo here, where the houses are fairly set back from the edge of vegetation. You know, most of the dune is probably inside of this vegetation, you may have a steep slope down here, but the houses in general are set back a little bit further. And then when we look in that area where you've got less volume than on average, those are the sections that are characterized more along a shoreline that looks like this, where you've got houses that are really getting quite close to that, that, that edge of vegetation line. So I think, I think that's somewhat coincidental, but it's also, it also shows that that, that part of the, the town may be a little bit more vulnerable. Another thing that we see is, as we, as we, as you start to erode these shorelines and, you know, the, the shoreline isn't naturally moving backwards, a lot of times you start to develop a little bit more of a, of a deficiency out there in the front. So there may be some things that are going on in the, in the, in the offshore area here that we're not aware of. But this is something that jumped out, just doing this assessment. Finally, the recommendations. Our recommendations after, you know, seeing that basically the shoreline is looking pretty stable, you know, that, that we're not seeing any hotspots right now, the, the long-term averages and the short-term averages look to be pretty stable, pretty manageable. But we do see some areas that have a little bit less volume in the town than other areas, and there are some areas where the houses are much closer to the, the, the stable line of vegetation than others. So one of the things that we recommended was to conduct a vulnerability assessment of the oceanfront structures. This is something that we did in the design process for the town of Duck and for the town of Killable Hills. We used a numerical model that basically simulates a storm event, and it, you, you input in the beach profile, you simulate the storm event, and it shows you what the beach profile would look like afterward. And by doing a comparison between the pre and post-storm beach profile, you can get a feel for, for, you know, where your damages might be along the, along the shoreline. What we create was, we created this vulnerability line, and then we were able to look at that in plan view in relation to where the actual structures are, which gave us a good idea of, you know, if you were going to plan for a project, this is probably the high priority area that you might want to think about. We can also use some of these shoreline change, volume changes to determine, you know, in a five-year time scale, what, what that might look like, what type of project that might look like. Recommendation number two is continue monitoring of the beach, of the beach profiles. However, we're not recommending doing it this year. We'll be doing, probably in the next couple of months, a, a survey of all of the town of Duck, all of the town of Killable Hills, and all of the town of Kitty Hawk. But that's primarily to monitor the, the projects that just went in. I don't really see, unless we see some, you know, some major impacts to the, the, the beach after the storm, after the storm sort of settles. You know, just looking long-term planning, I'm not sure that a, a survey this spring would, would add that much value. And then finally, that recommendation number three, determine a minimum cross-section volume. We've sort of expanded that a little bit more to say, really what we're looking for is with that vulnerability assessment and understanding what the rates are over the long-term, where the vulnerable areas are, you know, the comparison of, of volume along the shoreline, you could determine if you were to, if, if it was warranted, if there were enough areas that warranted a Beachville project similar to, you know, what Duck did, which was just a small part of their, their shoreline, that vulnerability analysis will tell us where that should be. And then to follow that up, to basically develop a, a five-year plan that would look to, to, to incorporate a, a potential project for Southern Shores into the re-nourishment that's scheduled in five years for the town of Duck, Killable Hills, and Kitty Hawk. So this would give you, you know, the, the length of shoreline that might be recommended, the volume of sand you'd be talking about, cost estimates that would be involved in that, the permitting timeframe for getting involved in that sort of a project. And it would, you know, you'd have this information in front of you that at that point in time, you know, council could say, all right, was this something that we want to plan for? Do we want to wait another season and monitor and see if these numbers change? But you would at least have a baseline at that point in time to plan for. I think by doing this study now, the study that, that was just done to get a feeling for that, and having that project just go in, the fact that the, the shoreline is looking fairly stable, at least based on the historic data that we have, I think you're in a really good position to, you know, to plan this out well. There isn't, you know, there isn't a big rush that we need to jump right on top of it. I don't think it would be economical to, you know, try to do some kind of a project a year from now on your own. But I think knowing that there may be some vulnerable spots in the middle there, doing this vulnerability assessment and having some time to plan long-term for, you know, what a beach nourishment program might look like in the town of Southern Shores, I think time is on your side. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Actually, I think, this is a, just while we're, while, while you have any questions. This is a shot that I took from the Kitty Hawk Pier about two hours ago. So we're probably looking closer to low tide than we are high tide. One of the things the mayor and I were talking about was that this sand fencing was installed right up at the edge, more or less, of the, of, of what was a, you know, a pretty big escarpment prior to the project going in. If you go out there today, there's some room that you could walk between the sand fence and where the scarp is. So that tells us that during this storm, during some of these high-tide events, there's been some scarping that's occurred in that area. But when you look at the tops of that fence, it also tells you that, you know, there's been a, a good amount of sand that's piling up in front of that, that, that dune there as well. I mean, we, we, I went out with a couple of the other towns today and looked at it. Our recommendation would be, you know, go ahead and install, try to install some sand fence between that sand fence and the, and the escarpment, if there's room there, or, you know, property owners could do the same thing. But I think what you'll see over the spring, as things sort of settle down and we get into the summer months, is that you'll have a, you know, you'll have a fairly wide, dry beach in that area, and when it's windy, that sand fence will continue to trap some sand, and you'll, you'll start to get more of a, a natural-looking dune there, as opposed to the escarpments that are out there now. Just need, you know, just need some time for the, the weather to calm down and have a chance to, to catch some sand there in front of that escarpment. So with that, I'll take questions.
Any questions, council?
Thanks, Ken. Thank you, sir.
Chris?
I've got one question.
Yes?
I know that our town came up with a, correct me if I'm wrong, a zoning ordinance or rule not to do beach pushes on the re-nourished parts of the beach. But outside of that, does beach pushing have any impact on?
So I'll, I'll, I'll give you my, my opinion on it.
I'll tell you mine.
Sure.
I'm not a big fan of it.
Right. I, I think it has, I think it has a place as a temporary measure, if, you know, if you've seen a lot of erosion and there's sand there to push, and you're still in the middle of winter, and you can, you know, you can afford to go ahead and push some sand up and try to, you know, create a buffer in front of your property, or create a buffer that might, you know, keep the water from flowing into the road or something like that. It, it may temporarily help you, but without actually adding sand to the system, I mean, it's a little bit of robbing Peter to pay Paul. So you're lowering the, the, the profile of the, of the beach that's, you know, that's in front of, that you're scraping from. So that wave energy's going to get a little bit further in, and then it just, you know, it just has to make it up to that, to that dune line, and it'll, you know, it's going to start carving it out. So as it, you know, if, if you know something's coming and you've got the time and you want to do something preventative, you know, I know a lot of communities that, that, you know, that do more, you know, community-wide pushes in the wintertime. As long as you don't get a big storm like the one that we just had, you know, it can prevent a little bit of damage, but unless you're really adding sand to the system, it really is temporary.
Well, one of the things that I've seen here recently is somewhere around your Station number 40, 38 to 50, somewhere around that area, the beach, since the Duck, Southern Shores, and Kitty Hawk re-nourishment was done, that beach profile looked like it came up a lot. Now, your recent profiles confirm that, it did raise quite a bit. So now some of those property owners are wanting to do some beach pushes. And that's where my question is, 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 you know, that sand came from Duck or Kitty Hawk, I, you know, who knows? At least I don't. But, and pushing that sand, does it take away from any long-term efforts on building the beach up?
You're talking about in, you said around 40? Let's see, so you're, you're talking about just north of the, of the project, or are you talking further to the?
Well, it would be north of the project.
Okay. So the project would have ended around here.
There's 40 right there.
Yeah, this is 40.
Now, see, and that whole wide section of beach right there, oh, since the re-nourishment, it was a lot of.
Sure.
You know, it's raised in elevation.
Yeah, a lot of the, the storms that came through in September, a lot of the waves that we were getting was at, were out of the south. So, you know, when, when the wind's blowing out of the south, you're spreading sand from the project, you know, north into Southern Shores, whereas, you know, this latest storm, most of the winds were out of the north. You're probably pushing sand the opposite direction. But it makes sense that, you know, that, that, that you're seeing a buildup outs, you know, just outside, you know, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 feet outside the project area that would be associated with the, you know, with the sand that was placed from the project.
But that, those areas that were outside of the project, if they start monkeying around with that sand supply, pushing it up to their dune, is it detrimental to the greater effort in any way?
I, I don't think it's detrimental to the, I mean, when you're talking about the, the drop in the bucket for, you know, a couple of property owners to start pushing sand versus all the sand that was placed from Southern Shores to Kitty Hawk to Killable Hills, I don't think it's going to have a, a huge negative impact. It really is more of a local impact. So if, you know, if two property owners are pushing their sand up, then that hole you just created is going to fill in, and it's filling in from, you know, the adjacent, the adjacent owner. So, you know, in essence, you're, you're somewhat deflating the sand that they've got in front of their property.
Got it?
So I, I take from this that you'd probably recommend an import of sand rather than a beach push.
Correct.
If you had to make a choice, one or the other.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Ken if he could clarify the, on the three recommendation slide, if you could give the council a projection of cost for those three and how they might interrelate with each other?
Sure. I think, I think we would recommend doing one and three, you know, under, under, under one contract. We, we've come up with some estimates that are probably in the $60,000 range to come up with that. If you were to move forward with one and three, at the end of that, you'd basically have a plan in place that would be, you know, sort of a five-year plan. You'd, you'd have some cost estimates, you'd have estimates of, you know, timeframes of permitting, things like that, and you'd have the extent of where, you know, what, what a project might look like five years from now. As far as the, the beach monitoring, I mean, monitoring and seeing what the beaches are doing is, is definitely a, you know, a good, healthy thing to do. That's, you know, that's how we keep track of what's going on out there to really understand the volume. There's a lot of cool, new technology. Our firm's getting more and more into drones, and it's great. You can, you know, you can even create some digital elevation models, but you're still just looking at that dry beach. You really need to look and see what's going on underneath the water surface and how much sand really is still in the system. So doing those, those monitoring, those beach profile monitorings is a good thing, but again, having just done the last one in December, you know, unless the storm, you know, when, when the water comes down, we really see some dramatic changes along, along the coast that we think we need to capture this and see, you know, what the, what the new, what the, what the new equilibrium is, I would say you could probably push that, that next profile survey on to spring of 2019. Yes?
Just to add to that, because I know, when you were here a long time ago, a year or so ago, you talked about potential, if the monitoring is kept up and there is lost due to storm events, lost volume, that FEMA has a process.
Correct.
Although no guarantees of reimbursement. By waiting another, a year there, do we at all forfeit that?
No, so that's a very good point. So the, the way that we set up the monitoring for the projects is typically, we, we want to monitor four, 5,000 feet on either side of the project. So for, before Southern Shores ever came along, the plan for Kitty Hawk was to monitor up to your Station minus 50 plus 00. So they're, they're, they're monitoring 5,000 feet into the town of Southern Shores anyway, and that's included in, you know, that, that includes the project. And the way that we wrote up Kitty Hawk's beach And the way that we wrote up Kitty Hawk's beach maintenance plan, it, it, it basically tacks on the Southern Shores project as part of Kitty Hawk's project. It's like an extension of the taper. So if they, if, if there was damage, you know, we believe the way that their maintenance plan is, is written, that, you know, whatever happens to that Southern Shores portion of it is basically included in there, and they're, you know, they're keeping up with the monitoring on a, on an annual basis.
On the, on the fill portion?
Correct, on the fill.
So we're really talking about the monitoring in, going into the future in the unfilled portion?
Correct, correct.
Ken, one more question on the cost. So you call, I got confused a little bit when I was talking to you before about the two cost. What, what point would each of them have to be done at a different cost? In other words, the sixty and the thirty-four?
So the thirty, the thirty-four is basically a duplicate of the, of the survey and the volume change, shoreline change assessment, basically what I'm reporting today. And that, we would, you would probably contract that sometime in early 2019. The survey would probably be done in April or May of 2019, and it would probably bleed into the following fiscal year. By the time you, you know, we finished all the assessment and did the report, we'd be, you know, in July or August of twenty, 2019. But the, but, but one and three that we talked about, about a sixty thousand estimate, that could, that could all be done in nineteen, eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen.
I would propose, council, that we, that we ask the town manager to put that into his, into his budget planning for that sixty thousand, sixty-four thousand, for this, for this meeting in the, this next meeting in this month. We look at some of the budget projections.
Need, need council action to do that, Mr. Mayor?
I would make a motion that we ask the town manager to, excuse me. I'd make a motion that we ask the town manager to include that sixty-four thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars into his budget projections for, for us to consider in the, at the, at the March workshop meeting. Do I have a second?
Let me ask, let me ask a question, Tom, for you.
Yeah.
So Ken, in 2022, we're talking about renourishment of that southern end, again, probably.
Potentially.
Renourishment project, right? Which is five years out, unless it just holds.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, council? Any questions?
I'm wondering if we need to look at a five-year plan, planning for renourishment in the hotspots, and put that into our budget annually.
Do we, Ken, I guess that's a good point. What would be the first step in your mind? Would we do the vulnerability assessment to figure out volume in areas?
Correct.
In order, to be able to do that? Does that make sense?
Right. So it would, right, the, the vulnerability assessment is gonna, is gonna point us to the, the areas that say, all right, I, I mean, it, you know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a thousand-foot section, and at that point in time, you know, you know, we might rethink, you know, well, how much sand are you talking about? Is it really worth, you know, pumping sand in for that small of an area? Typically, you want, you know, a continuous portion of, of, you know, maybe a mile, maybe more, for the project really to hold up well, and then the longer, the better. So we would look at it, you know, we wouldn't necessarily, if, it may be a different project if you found, you know, a, a small spot here, and a small spot here, and a small spot there, you know, maybe some sort of truck haul or, or some other, some other method is, you know, the preferred plan. But all, I mean, in my mind, number three, determine the minimum cross-section, really is a kind of a five-year plan. You know, tho- those types of, those types of things would be incorporated in that five-year plan.
And the, the volume would be done 2019? Number three?
Two. We would use, we would use the existing surveys to figure out what kind of volume we would project that project would have. We would also look at probably some, you know, conservative erosion rates, if we see some spots that, you know, I mean, over the long term, like I said, the, the, you know, the, the volume change rate has been in the positive, but we may apply some, you know, some, some, some small-scale negative erosion rates to, to look at what that project would look like in 2022. So you would have a, you know, basically a proposed plan in place, and then in spring of 2019, if you were to update your beach profile survey, then we could go back in and, you know, re, kinda recalibrate those numbers if need be.
All I was trying to do, Gary, was give us a, give us a baseline and allocate the funding for that baseline.
I, I understand, and I'm not against that, I'm just.
So right, how much to put in the budget, right?
You know, how much do we need to put in the budget to plan for our renourishment in five years? And how do we?
But that's, that's going to, that's the next step.
Right.
Let's get our vulnerability, our vulnerabilities, I'll say this right in a minute, vulnerability assessment, and then, and then address the next issue of whether we wanna fund this thing on a continuing basis by putting money aside each year for a five-year-down-the-road project. I think that's something we can discuss in our, in our budget.
Well, why don't you make it all-inclusive? Sixty-five K plus additional funding over a five-year period, because we don't wanna get surprised like we did with Pelican Watch this last year and having to come up with the money. If we budget now, if we're gonna do beach nourishment, let's be prepared when those things come up.
The fill, the fill area, like I said, the fill area is gonna be surveyed here in a few months.
Right.
So we would have that data to incorporate, how is that area performing, and be able to put those projections. When we talk about the five-year, we could talk about what we believe we need for that southern portion that's already been built, and is there a need for a project somewhere else in the town? So all of that could be incorporated.
If I'm understanding things correctly here, we're asking the town manager to put some money into the budget. We're not necessarily approving this right now.
Correct, correct.
But your, Mr. McDonald's, your points and everything, we can have that discussion during our budget planning workshop, 'cause we gotta do this in conjunction with a whole bunch of other things we need to talk about also. So, I mean, they're all valid questions, but, yeah, I think those discussions are gonna come a little later.
Ken, I still have to do the two plus two equals four. If this, what they're talking about is asking me to project something in the draft budget, draft budget for eighteen, nineteen, which runs through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. I'm still confused about number three. I'm hearing you say that that's supposed to be done, or should be done in the spring of two thousand and nineteen, which if you budget.
Number two is what we're talking about.
I mean, I meant number two, I meant number two. So if sixty thousand dollars is budgeted for number one, and you do number two in the spring of two thousand and nineteen, is that inclusive of the, is that within the sixty thousand, or is that extra from the sixty thousand?
The survey number two?
Yes.
That's extra?
They need to understand that.
Okay.
Please.
You're talking about doing one and three right now?
Correct, correct.
And then two would come, it's delayed, it's delayed a year.
It's delayed a year, but the town manager's concern is that it would, that the survey would actually be done in the fiscal year you're trying to plan for.
Twenty nineteen. So you're gonna add, what you gotta do is add sixty-four thousand, sixty thousand dollars plus thirty-two, thirty-four thousand.
Right, right.
So, look at really ninety thousand dollars and not sixty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Round numbers.
Right, right.
Correct.
Well, I, I go back to my, I amend my original motion to make it include, say, ninety thousand dollars to be set aside, rather than sixty thousand.
Ninety-four thousand, right.
Ninety-four thousand?
The projection is thirty-four plus sixty is what I'm hearing, just so y'all know that. So if that's what you want me to show you at the next budget planning session, we will do that, if the motion passes.
Now, will that, number two, if we do that in twenty nineteen, that, that's all-inclusive of our beach, not just the area we renourished, correct?
That's right. It would include all, everything that was done in the, the December twenty seventeen.
But, okay, and I'm, I'm writing.
The survey that was done.
I made some notes and wrote some dates down. I thought you said two needed to be done the following year after nineteen, like in twenty twenty.
It wouldn't be done in the spring of twenty eighteen, which is when we're gonna do the, the fill area for Kitty Hawk. It will be done in the spring of twenty nineteen, which is still fiscal year eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, that's, I understand. That's it, that's in the year we're planning for coming up.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's, that was my, where I was confused, 'cause you said the following year after that.
Calendar versus fiscal.
So, we would do the assessment, number one and three, this spring?
We'd do it whenever, right?
Yeah, you would do it whenever you, yeah, whenever you initiated.
We can do it, no, we can do it as soon as the budget's passed. I mean, one and three can start whenever. Two, you're saying?
Okay, wait a minute. He, he, you, when you say this spring, you're talking about sometime prior to June thirtieth of this year, I'm assuming.
That's right.
So that would have to be a budget amendment for this year's budget, not next year, not next fiscal year.
Yeah, we're not asking for that, I don't think.
Trying to get.
But that's.
But that's what he's, that's, I think that's what I'm hearing him say, it couldn't be done.
I thought he said twenty nineteen, not this year.
I don't think, I don't think one and, I don't think that there's an emergency to start one and three.
Okay.
Immediately.
So when are you projecting to do that?
It would take about six months to do it. So I, I would feel comfortable that if, if it was the pleasure of the council to not make a budget amendment to do it, you know, to try to jam something in this year and plan for it and talk about it and do it in next fiscal year, that the study could wait till then, and I think if you initiate that study right around, you know, June, July, whenever you pass the budget, it could, it would be done around the end of the year. It would be done around December, six months or so.
Yeah, that's the way I was understanding all this conversation, is that the monies would come from the budget that we've gonna be working on.
Correct.
Not this year's budget.
Like I said, I don't see, I don't see an urgency based on, you know, when we would project to actually do a project. The fact that we're talking about, you know, a long-term plan, I, I don't see a need to, you know, to, to jump right into it and, and, you know, try to do something that's coming.
Do the ninety-four, Tom.
So, change is sixty-four thousand to ninety-four thousand.
To ninety-four.
And then we'll have something that Peter can be directed to go ahead and do, if we, if we pass this motion. Have a motion and a second, amended motion now with ninety-four thousand. We've got some conversation about it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion's made and carried, Sheila, thank you. Any, any other questions for Ken? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate your help, your help tonight. Moving right along. This time I'd call on our fire chief, Ed Limbacher, to introduce our next presenter. We didn't get in.
Good evening, council. So before we get started and I introduce Ken, I did, we have prepared a slide presentation just reviewing how we got here. I'm not sure there's any new faces in the audience, but if you want me to do that, I can, or we can move into Ken and not waste our time, or if, it's up to you, it's council's pleasure, so, you tell me.
I think, I think, I can't speak for everyone, I think most of us have been briefed on these, on how we got here in the past. If you, if, unless council will, if someone on council would desire to hear that again, I'd say go ahead and present, introduce Ken, but just leave everybody a chance. You need more information about the background? We're good to introduce.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on, on the same page and give you that option. But certainly, if you have a question, you can jump in and we can take care of it as we go. So we have Ken from Stewart Cooper and Newell here, and this is Ken Newell, so I'll introduce him, and he can give his presentation, and if we have any follow-up questions, we can jump in and let it go.
Thank you, Ed.
Yep.
Good evening, Ken.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm not nearly as excited as beach erosion, so I'll try my best to keep you guys away.
You never can tell.
You never can tell, yes, sir. So again, thank you for having us. Let me take a look here. This is, just as simply this says, we do a lot of fire stations, okay? We're based here in North Carolina. I spend probably ninety-five percent of all my days working on station design and municipal facilities, so everything you see in the blue states is where we have worked on fire stations or EMS stations. If you've got relatives in Alabama, I'd appreciate a good reference. I'd love to color that state in, as you can see. But yes, we, we do them all the way, full services, all the way from the coast to the mountains in the Carolinas and everywhere else as well, so I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on that. This is really what I wanna talk to you about tonight. First, I wanna kinda give you an update. You've seen some of the boards as you come in, I will, I will quickly flip through those and kinda give you a brief description of where we stand with that. And really, the phase of the design that we're trying to complete at this point is schematic design, so it's the very first phase. So we've gone through a, a long process, trying to make sure that we can fit the needs of the fire department into the facilities that we're looking at, and have pared that down as much as, as much as you will see tonight. And there's a few follow-up questions I wanna point out as we go through the presentation tonight that have come back from the town, one of which is how we look at parking alternatives along Pintail. The other is how we would look at the roof pitch and material choice there, and I'll mention those as we go through the drawings, and also consider the exterior material choice, and where we go from here on, on choices of the project itself. So this is the schematic site, conceptual site plan of the facility. This is the site where the existing station sits. If you could look through the gray block, you would actually see on this Google Earth image, some of the existing fire station as it sits on the site. What you see in the dark red line represents the property line of the existing fire station site, and what you see in the blue line is the building setback. So what that tells you is you see that the gray line has exceeded over the blue line, is that we have exceeded over the setback line with the needed square footage of the fire station itself. So one of the things I wanted to point out from the beginning, that we will need permission on eventually, is a, a building setback there at the very top of the plan, just by a couple of feet, and then on the rear of the plan, back towards Public Works, you can see the block of the building that kinda sticks between the blue line and the red line. So some, some accommodation will need to be made there. The parking along Pintail itself, currently parking is along Pintail, but in a perpendicular parking sit, situation. This is showing it in a parallel parking configuration, which reduces the number of parking spaces slightly along the street. But we've got room there, so we could either do the parallel parking, as you see here, we could do perpendicular parking, as it is currently, or we could do angle parking. Any one of those would satisfy, but all of them would require parking directly off of Pintail itself. So that, I just wanted to point out some of the things that would be a requirement in terms of looking and, and getting with Wes. We've already, you know, had some conversations with Wes on what possibly could be done that would satisfy some of the ordinances on the building. Another couple of things to point out on the site, you'll notice that on our rear side, the rear of our site, the parking lot goes all the way to, the development goes all the way to the Public Works fence line. So we are backing up, we're anticipating that we will need to do some grading all the way back to that point, and one of the reasons we would do grading to that point is the floor elevation of the existing fire station is not outside of the flood zone. So we need to raise the floor elevation, the entire site under the pad of the building, up some, and if you're familiar with the station, there's about three different levels of floor, and then now, we're gonna have one level of floor as this layout concerns. So we would raise it all up to that one level. You can see in this drawing, the four double-loaded drive-through bays, so that you would come off of Pintail with the apparatus, be able to drive through the station, and then respond directly out onto South Dogwood from the configuration that's there. So what this picture really tells you is we have filled up the site, so the, the building needs are there, and we have gone to the setback lines on all four of the setback lines with what you see in this configuration. This is the floor plan that you just saw represented in gray, and so it is a very compact and tight floor plan. Again, the site has driven the configuration of this layout, so you'll see in gray, the you'll see in gray, the double-loaded drive-through bays, and all of the major blocks that you see there in the gray represent the apparatus that the fire department needs to put in the facilities, so they do fit, so we really squeeze that as much as we possibly can. What you see in the blue is coming in from the public entrance at the top of the plan, and then the office and administrative spaces, that the public would hopefully be stopped and zoned into as far as the transactions that they would occur for the public in the station. And then you see in the yellow, the more private areas, the living portions of the building, so at the, you start from the blue and you work your way back through some sleep rooms, some toilet shower rooms, you get to the day rooms and kitchen areas and exercise rooms and a patio off of that back corner on the backside of the site. So again, it's a very compact floor plan, put as much information in as you can, and you see from the red arrows, no matter how beautiful the building can be, or how the floor plan is laid out, when the alarm goes off, you've got to be able to respond to the apparatus quickly. So from those red arrows you see, you actually have from anywhere in the building, a very quick access point into the apparatus bays themselves. And I know I'm going quickly, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have, so feel free to interrupt me. I'm married and have small kids, I'm used to being interrupted, so I don't mind that at all. The first schemes that we're looking at here in terms of exterior elevations, and again, I'll remind you, this is the concept drawings, so we're really here to kind of get your input and show you where we're at today. The massing of the building, the size, the configuration of it is identical in the two schemes I'm gonna show you, the difference is going to be the materials that we're looking at here. So what you see in the top drawing is from Pintail, Pintail Trail, which is the public entry point. We've learned over the years after four hundred and some fire stations, if you don't make a clear point, visual point of public entrance on a fire station, the public will always pull up in front of the apparatus bay doors and try to go in there. So what we've done is on that side of the building, made a clear, almost a small tower element, so that they can see where they need to come and go from the building, and then the front elevation off of South Dogwood shows from that street view what you would see from the station, which is really kind of what you would consider the front of the building as well. The next set of drawings are the side elevation, the end of the apparatus bays against the residential side, and then the back elevation. So, the difference between these first set of drawings that I've just shown you is the materials themselves. So what you're looking at in the darker gray band at the bottom is a heavy decorative block detail, again, firefighters and any emergency facilities is tough on a building, any good public safety building should be considered a fifty to seventy-five-year building, so we're trying to design it and specify materials that will last, that you don't have to replace and do a lot of maintenance too. So that's heavy masonry on the lower portion of this building. In option A, which is what we're looking at here, the upper portion, the yellowish or buff-colored portions, is the fiber cement board, okay? So that's, that's the areas of the building that are the fiber cement, which is a cementitious fiberboard, Hardy Plank is a brand name that you might be familiar with, so it's a material that will last a long time, take a lot of abuse as you go forward on that. The difference between this scheme and this scheme, if you don't pay close attention, you won't know it, because it's the same massing and same colors, but in this scheme, the upper yellow portions is the full brick. So you've got heavy masonry bases of this building, just like the previous version I've shown you, but the upper portions are the brick versions of it. So instead of the fiber cement board, you go to brick, which generally speaking, in most economies, is roughly the same cost, the brick and fiber cement board is roughly the same cost. We've talked a couple of times about how to take some alternate bids on the station and compare the two, so that on bid day, we can actually see which would be the most cost-effective between the two. The upper roof on this building is also shown in both schemes as a standing seam metal roof, and so it is on a slope that we could change out, one of the questions was about roofing materials, so we could take an alternate bid also to go with an asphalt shingle roof, and I'll show you a couple of examples of that here in a moment. So there's a couple of ways on these exterior materials, we can take alternate bids in an attempt to make sure on bid day that we're keeping the cost as low as possible in, in moving forward. So again, this is the side elevation and the back elevation showing the full brick colors on this building. This is the massing, no matter what materials we take and color that we use on those two options, this is a sketch, a three-D sketch model that shows, on the right-hand side, from the corner of Dogwood and Pintail, you can kind of see what that public entry massing would look like, you can start to see how the roof forms would play into the site, and then the, on the lower right-hand photo, you see our image, you see there, again, from the main street view, looking at the apparatus base, and then on the left-hand side are the rear views of the station. So it's gonna be an attractive building on all four sides, we feel. I'm showing you a couple of photos now, because this would reflect similar in materials and colors to what I've shown you then in the color rendering. So, this is the recently completed project we did in Holden Beach, was the Town Hall and Police Department, so here you see the heavy masonry block base with the fiber cement board siding up high, and then the metal roofing higher above that, metal roofing selecting a color that is going to not age and fade, and so therefore, it's more of a galvanoom-type finish associated with that metal roof, so that, as you know, if you've seen red roofs before, in about ten years, they'll be pink, so you want to avoid anything that's gonna age and require some additional maintenance as you move forward. And then the next photo is another station not too far away, in Virginia Beach, the first landing station, which is that heavy masonry base, and then the yellow color is the brick, that is full brick material above that. So, over the lifespan of the project, this will cost them less, because they won't have to ever paint the fiber cement board ever again, so you typically would not paint brick unless you want to change a color. And also, in this example, you're looking at an asphalt shingle roof example to that as well. So, I, I wanted to point out those two for you, so you can get an idea of what that would look like. So, let me mention here, and I'll be glad to go back and answer any of those questions in terms of the design and the aesthetics of the building, where we're at today, but I wanted to point out to you some of the financial implications of the project as it stands here towards the end of schematic design phase. And I'd like to skip the first bullet, please, and go down to the second bullet. So the total project cost currently estimated is based on a size of building at thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-three square feet, that's where we're at today, including an upper mezzanine level near the apparatus base. So that, that is a footprint that has been reduced a couple of times now, the last time has been reduced by about two thousand square feet, and eliminated a second story to lower the overall construction cost as to the minimum that we can. The current estimate is based on a range of cost of anywhere from three twenty-five to three fifty per square foot, and believe me, I know how high that sounds and how high that looks, that's just where the construction climate has gone over the last few years, it's a booming economy, and the cost of construction has significantly increased over the last few years. So, that range right now at three twenty-five to three fifty, based on that square feet, gives a total project cost, or estimate right now, of between four point nine and five point four million dollars, that includes ancillary costs. As you see from the next bullet down, the final numbers are really gonna need to be determined on bid day, at this point, it's anybody's best guess of what the final bids will come in at, although we are receiving bids on stations across the state typically every thirty days, so we're able to kind of track fairly accurately what's going on in the construction, the climate. But all that goes to mean is that we need to get out to bid quickly as possible in order to get the best prices that you possibly can. The fourth bullet down in that second category shows that the architect's fees of roughly three hundred thousand dollars is a complete design fee for all the architects, engineers, and that that has been budgeted and has been funded separately, so that's not in the four point nine to five point four, but it has been handled and addressed in other budget as well, from the fire department's point of view. And as a construction point, as a point of comparison, the Kitty Hawk Fire Station that we did now about twelve years ago, came in similar size and quality, constructed in two thousand and six of three point five million, so you can kind of get an idea of what's happened to construction cost over the last twelve years on that. Back up to the top bullet now, and you can see here that since we've been talking about this over the last year, construction costs have greatly gone up, as Mr. Nation can, can understand and sees that in his climate every day, the, the construction prices are really skyrocketing over the last little bit, and with continued storms and continued talks of tariffs on steel and different things that are going on, however you may feel about those, the only thing that that will do is drive prices even higher. So we see that there's about a twenty-five dollar per square foot, or about eight and a half percent increase in construction cost in the last twelve months, which is across, there's some higher, some lower, but that's a good average. So if you were to wait, you can see from the bullets there, if you were to wait five years based on that a five percent rate of inflation or escalation cost each year, so another five years, this same footprint would be estimated to cost six point four million. So, it's, it's a good time to build, it's almost never cheaper to build than now, so the only thing that really can impact that in your favor or the favor of the fire department would be some sort of economic collapse, which would again, be like two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when prices did for about a year dip back down as well, so I don't think anybody's interested in that too much. Interest rates are gonna be higher, driving the financing cost higher as well. So, that last bullet, I believe the chief's gonna address.
So what we did here was just take a number from the budget planning process that we all worked through, and again, this is just a number, and it's just something to put in perspective. So we took five million over twenty-five years at four percent, which is twenty-six four hundred monthly, three sixteen eight hundred annually for twenty-five years. Again, that's a number of just, it's an educated guess, until you actually have the bid process, we're not gonna be able to tell you it's gonna be this number, that's an educated guess, and it's just the best we can do at this point, but.
Does anyone have any questions for Ken, or me?
I've got a couple more for the architect.
Sure.
Your cost estimating, does it include the site work?
Yes, sir, everything that we have projected at this point includes the site work. You'll notice that if you would have done the math on that second set of bullets, that three twenty-five to three fifty, you'll notice that based on thirteen four fifty-three, that wouldn't come up to quite that, so there is about a twenty percent soft cost number built into that four point nine to four, five point four, and that includes things that would not be in the construction cost, things like survey costs, our furniture fixtures and equipment, the things that you normally would not pay the general contractor to provide, so those are included in the overall cost, but not into three twenty-five to three fifty. So, we, we feel pretty good, as best as it can be projected on the four point nine to five point four, but to answer your question is yes, that three twenty-five to three fifty includes normal site work as well. And if we stick close, for instance, the demolition of the existing building is gonna have to be included in total project cost, so that would be estimated in that four point nine to five point four as well. Does that answer your question, Mr. Council?
So, well, yeah, I believe it does, but that includes all like the, the raising of the site.
Yes, sir.
Storm drainage.
Yes, sir.
Parking.
Landscaping, paving, all of those things.
Does it include also hook up to that wastewater treatment facility?
This number includes the site utilities, all the way to the property line, but anything off-site is being handled through a separate budget item as well.
Okay. And, one other, I've got two other things. One of them is, is as I mentioned to you during the information, open house part, whatever materials we choose on this, it'd be nice to mimic or match the school across the street as much as possible.
Yes, sir. And, and it's our goal to, to respond to the surrounding community, and so some of the things that have been selected here in terms of materials, roof shapes, even some of the window treatments that we showed, like the screenings and awnings over those windows themselves, we want to try to respond to the vernacular of the existing area.
Then the final thing that I had is going to the roof material. This is not my world, so I may be misstating, saying this incorrectly, but I understand that the asphalt shingles have a wind rating or a wind load of X, you know, it's, in other words, they don't guarantee it.
Hundred thirty-five miles an hour, something like that.
Yeah. But is, is there any advantage of the metal seam roof versus asphalt shingle as far as keeping the roof material on during?
It is, it's got typically, and based on the specification, but normally you would expect a higher wind rating capacity for the metal roof than you would expect for the shingle roof, and that kind of goes towards the life cycle cost of an asphalt shingle roof as well, which means that over the course of the fifty years that you would expect to get out of the standing seam metal roof, you would probably replace that asphalt shingle roof two to three times.
Okay. That, that'll help us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and again, our goal is, particularly after talking with Mr. Nation as well, is that the roof material is one very possible alternate that we can take on bid day, so that we can design it, put it out to bid as the standing seam metal roof, and then get an alternative bid to see what the savings would be to go with an asphalt shingle roof, and then make that decision after the bid opening.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jim.
If I can just speak to your septic problem or sewage, however we're gonna handle it, we have come up with kind of a cost-effective way to handle the septic issue, because obviously you saw the plot of land and the site work, we're not gonna have the room for a drain field and things like that. When I talked to Ken, he has a very costly solution we could put on-site, which was unacceptable to us, because we're trying to keep the cost down, so we've spoke to the people that own the treatment facility that's on Foxwood, and it would merely be running a pipe right through, right bordering there, hitting the manhole, and then using a pumping station to pump it over.
Yeah, but I bet they're not giving that to you for nothing.
No, they're not gonna give it to us for nothing, but it is very cost-effective in comparison, and it's a monthly bill, he said it would be about what one of those houses are, so it's a very efficient, cost-effective way of doing it versus building a treatment plan. And I think, Ken, you said it was about a quarter of a million?
The last time that we had to build a treatment plan on-site, and that's a site that had room for a treatment plant, you really don't on this site, but the last time we did that, it was roughly a quarter of a million dollars to build an on-site treatment plant.
Any questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask if Ed could pull the site plan slide back up? I just want to make sure that council was clear on some things that Ken said. One is, he mentioned the setback, that would have to be handled through a town code change, the council would have to take action on that and consider that. Also, the, just want to recap, the Pintail Trail parking, not only the fact of parking on Pintail Trail, but possibly the number of parking spaces would have to be covered with a town code ordinance change as well. Also, you'll see here, he mentioned the rear of the lot outside, the red area, that's Town of Southern Shores, property now, that would have to be subject to a perpetual easement or, and also a cross-use agreement with the town as well. So those three things would, would definitely have to be done, and they're gonna be starting on those shortly, because some of them have to be in place before Ken does the bid specs. So, council may see that start up and come through as a request from the fire department very shortly. The, the other, the other thing is that, the, as I mentioned two weeks ago, the budget for eighteen nineteen will have a budget amount projected in that draft to you for consideration for next year, in case you decide to accept a bid when it comes back to you. So that will be a cost in the budget for that, in the projected budget for something for next year. So I mentioned that to you two, two weeks ago, and that figure will be in the upcoming session, our planning sessions. So this, you have funded Ken's work through the bidding process, and then the next thing would happen would be, he would bring you the bids for your consideration, if you approve one of the bids at that point in time, we're good to go, and of course, that, there would be something in the budget to take care of the debt service, projected debt service for the next fiscal year, eighteen nineteen.
Fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
Yes, sir.
I know that these are only schematic drawings, but am I correct in thinking that the fire department property is owned by one entity, and the Public Works is owned by the town?
That's correct.
They're separate owners?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So we'd have, we'd have to accommodate for that, prior to them putting it out for bid.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just one, trying to think about that parking on Pintail, if we can't put it back there behind the fire department, but.
Well, he's counting that, that's, that's our challenge, he's counting on that right now, not only in that location, but also on Pintail. So that's why when we get down to it, the number of spaces may have to be addressed by the council as well.
Okay, I see that.
And at least they're not backing out, backing out into the road, they're at least going parallel, so you shouldn't have to, people won't be turning around.
Yeah, that kind of goes against the grain of everything I've been taught.
Yeah.
And, and just as another footnote, the design process, Public Works and I have been involved in talking with the fire department, it would be a cross-use situation, so that Town, Public Works could use it for something during the day or whatever at certain times as well. So that's what we're looking at.
Will the, will there have to be any other zoning or changes to the lot coverage on the town piece of property, because we're now taking property that is pretty much all concrete and building and adding more concrete to that? And I, I know that's not, that's not.
You mean, you mean if we take away the, the, well, it would be a cross-use situation, we would still be using that area, but as long as we got, we comply with eighty-five percent rule.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm looking at Wes now.
I don't know, I'll just bring that up, because we, maybe, it looks like it's nearly a hundred percent.
You're looking at eighty-five percent for fire stations, and I think that's your honor.
But he's, but I think Councilman Nation is talking about the resulting Public Works property, right?
And Councilman Nation, the, everything that you see on the new sketch, which is paved surfaces on the Public Works property or town property, is also currently paved surfaces too, so we're not increasing the impertinence.
That was what I was, that was, yeah.
Good question.
So it's not a change in coverage, whether it's at eighty-five percent or not, at least we're not increasing.
Anything else, council? Any other questions? What do you need from us?
They don't, I don't think you need anything at this point, we're headed toward bidding.
I just need you to say you love it, you just love the great job we've done, and.
You got it.
You know better than that.
We're looking forward to the construction drawings.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much, appreciate it. Very much, appreciate it. This time I'll open a public hearing for ZTA 1802. I'll turn the meeting over to our town attorney for that hearing, public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a legislative public hearing, and I'm going to wait for everyone who's leaving at the moment to go ahead, and we'll go in just a moment.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Again, this is a public hearing for zoning text amendment 1802 that was submitted by the town to amend the Town of Co., Southern Shores by amending section 36-175 wireless telecommunications sites and towers. This is a legislative public hearing. Individuals who come to the podium will not be sworn. There will first be a staff presentation. I believe that the planning board chairman would like to make a presentation, and then after their presentations, I will ask for members of the audience to raise their hands if they wish to speak at the public hearing. Mr. Haskett.
Good evening again, Wes.
Good evening, and y'all have made it to the most exciting item on the agenda tonight. The application you have before you right now is ZTA-1802. This is an amendment submitted by town staff to amend section 36-175 wireless telecommunications sites and towers. North Carolina general statutes govern the town authority to regulate wireless telecommunications facilities. We currently have an ordinance that regulates them, as is based on previous general statutes. In 2017, there were some substantial changes made to the text of the general statutes that govern wireless telecommunications sites and facilities. That happened in July of 2017. And the changes affect the town regulations of wireless telecommunications facilities and require that the town zoning ordinance be updated accordingly, which is what we've provided to y'all. The statutes as amended provides that the town is not authorized to acquire the construction or installation of wireless facilities or to regulate wireless services other than those set in the general statute. General statutes provide that the town shall not prohibit, regulate, or charge for the co-location of small wireless facilities other than those set in the new legislation. Similarly, the statutory amendments place limitations on the town's ability to regulate the use of rights-of-way and utility poles by wireless providers using small wireless facilities. As a result, town staff is proposing to amend the town's current zoning ordinance by adding language that allows small wireless facilities and the use and installation of utility poles in accordance with aforementioned general statutes. A small wireless facility is defined as a wireless facility that meets both of the following qualifications. Number one, each antenna is located inside an enclosure of no more than six cubic feet in volume, or in the case of an antenna that has exposed elements, the antenna and all of its exposed elements, if enclosed, could fit within an enclosure of no more than six cubic feet. The second qualification, all other wireless equipment associated with the facility has a cumulative volume of no more than 28 cubic feet. For purposes of this sub subdivision, the following types of ancillary equipment are not included in the calculation of equipment volume. Electric meters, concealment elements, telecommunications demarcation boxes, ground-based enclosures, grounding equipment, power transfer switches, cutoff switches, variable cable runs for the connection of power and other services or other support structures. The proposed language would allow small wireless facilities as a permitted use in all zoning districts, which may co-locate, co-locate meaning attaching equipment to a structure along, across, upon, or under any town right-of-way. Following review and approval, review and approval of a wireless application, a wireless provider could then place, maintain, modify, operate, or replace associated utility poles, city utility poles, conduit, cable, or related ordinances and facilities along, across, upon, and under any town right-of-way. The placement, maintenance, modification, operation, or replacement of utility poles and city utility poles associated with the co-location of small wireless facilities along, across, upon, or under any town rights-of-way shall be subject only to review or approval if the wireless provider meets the two following requirements. Number one, each new utility pole and each modified or replaced utility pole or city utility pole installed in town rights-of-way shall not exceed 50 feet above the ground level. Number two, each new small wireless facility in the right-of-way shall not extend more than 10 feet above the utility pole, city utility pole, or wireless support structure on which it is located. In addition, the town may provide free access to the town right-of-way on a nondiscriminatory basis in order to facilitate the public benefits of the deployment of wireless facilities. Or the town may choose to assess a right-of-way charge for use or occupation of the right-of-way by a wireless provider. In addition, charges shall meet all the following requirements. Number one, the rights-of-way charge shall not exceed the direct and actual cost of managing the town right-of-way and shall not be based on the wireless provider's review or customer accounts. Number two, the right-of-way charge shall not exceed that imposed on other users of the right-of-way, including publicly, cooperatively, or municipally owned utilities. And lastly, number three, the right-of-way charge shall be reasonable and nondiscriminatory. With respect to the town's currently adopted land use plan, it is related to policy two, stating that the community values of the town will continue to comply with the founder's original vision of Southern Shores, a low-density residential community comprised of single-family dwellings on large lots, served by a small commercial district. Town staff and the town planning board both recommended that the amendments are consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan, and the town planning board, Mr. Williams will explain further unanimously, 4-0 recommended approval of this application in February. This concludes the staff report. I will note that Mr. Gallup was a big help, and he is the one who put together the majority of the language, so I can try to answer questions for you, or I don't know if Ben wants to, if he has anything to add, or if any questions he may want to answer as well. But thank you for your assistance in putting this together.
Thank you, Mr. Haskett. Does anybody have any questions for Wes?
Just one. Do we really have a choice in this?
The town attorney can probably answer it better than me, but this, it's put in their favor for sure.
Well, Wes, we don't have utility poles, except in a very small area.
Right.
They can install them now.
They can, they can add them.
So they can install them now?
The essence of the legislation, first of all, is it was clearly written by the telecommunications industry and not by anyone who cared to have any regulatory authority over the telecommunications industry. It essentially says if you have utility poles, the town, you can't contract with them or keep them from sticking them on your utility poles. They can stick these small wireless facilities on your utility poles. And that if they need to put in utility poles, they can put in utility poles in your right-of-ways. And they can also use your right-of-ways, I think it says, over, under, around, through, whatever they want to do with your, I'm not sure how they do over your right-of-way unless it's, I guess it's a wired situation, not in the way of cars. There is a limitation that you can't, they can't obstruct the right-of-way. But that's about the only limitation that they have in installing them within your right-of-way. So you don't have a whole lot of choice. There is a limited area of regulation that, I'll let Mr. Williams go through his discussion, and I'll get back to you with that. But I will tell you that the planning board, I went through with them, the limited areas of regulation, and they didn't seem, they didn't see a whole lot of area to be able to come up with any regulation. Certainly, you could do differently, but I'll explain that to you when we get to that point. Any other particular questions for me before I go to Mr. Williams?
So, but truthfully, whether, whether we act on this or don't act on this, this is the law.
It's, it's a very, one thing you'll notice, it's 20-something pages long, and the majority of it is just changes near the end. What happened with the telecommunications statutes, I think the first ones were adopted in 2009, and I'd call them pretty detailed. And then in 2013, they adopted some very detailed regulations about other things related to telecommunications. And these are exceptionally detailed, and they all fit into different categories. And the reason why I have reproduced the full ordinance is because I expect them to make more changes. And this way I can track over time how they're making the changes and, and see if I can figure out how they interrelate, because it's not as easy as it seems. But that's why it's so long. But in the current changes, they've even detailed the process, how many days they've got, what they can apply, what the application can have. I'm not sure why they gave anybody the authority to have an ordinance, because essentially your ordinance, as written, says this is what the statute says we can do. So it's, it's very detailed in the statute, and I wouldn't, it's not a direct cut and paste into the ordinance, because there are areas of the statute that say the town may do this. Well, that isn't what your ordinance would say, it just says somebody do this. So there were changes like that, but otherwise, it's pretty close to a cut and paste and reorganization of the statute with some thought into where, where things went.
I will just note one other thing. We have been contacted by two providers for two certain or two separate areas for these utility or these facilities.
And that was part of the drive, this was also something that I would suspect Code Right was probably going to look at in their stuff as a regulatory change, but with people already applying for it or wanting to apply, that's why Mr. Haskett is moving ahead with trying to get it in the ordinance so that you can have the limited regulatory authority that you can have, so that you can look at it and at least keep track of them and have permits and an application process.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Haskett.
How do we get, how do we get to the, I have one question. How do we get to this, this six cubic feet in volume? What, in other words, is that like one of those green pedestals you see that cable box people have, or what?
Something similar in size, I would say, probably.
And the 28 cubic feet cumulative value of volume, no more than 28 cubic, would that include the pole?
Cubic feet, I'm not sure, but I think that's saying altogether, your box and all of the equipment that it mentions cannot exceed that amount.
Okay. It's just, it's like, it's an arbitrary number, like, let's have.
I'm sure they've, I'm sure they've thought about it.
They make sure all their junk will fit in that space.
I do not know why it's 28 cubic feet.
It sounds to me like whoever they buy these boxes from, they made the spec to fit that manufacturer.
I think you're probably right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
First thing that I want to mention was to, I want to thank Wes and Ben for, for taking up most of my presentation. The good news is that there are about three areas that the town still has a little bit of control. And I mean, little bit. And one of them is if it deals with public safety, and the thing I can think there is fall zones, if the, if they put in a 50-foot pole in the right-of-way and the house on that lot sits 20 feet from the front of the lot, you have a public safety issue. And along with that, some reasonable spacing requirements for the poles. I don't know exactly what that means, but we've got control, or some control over that. Design standards for decorative utility poles, I don't know what a decorative utility poles, unless, you know, it's painting some pink and some green or something. And then some stealth and concealment standards if we want to impose those. And the last one is historic preservation requirements. So we may be able to do something about, you know, location of the poles, not directly in front of a flat top that's in the historic preservation thing. When I worked on the zoning text amendments a long time ago, and we, before the tower, big tower was put up, these small dispersive systems were being developed at that point, and we thought that at some time in the future, they would, you know, be employed, employed here. The other thing I want to mention is when it came to the determination of whether it was consistent with the land use plan and whether we wanted to recommend or not recommend the, the planning board's recommendation with the town council, I couldn't get anybody to make a recommendation, so I made the recommendation to approve the ZTA as written. And then I had to try to convince somebody for a second. So it's not something that the planning board is really strongly in favor of. But as Wes said, planning board determined that it was consistent with the land use plan, and we recommend that the town council approve ZTA 1802. 18-02. Is there any questions?
Any questions, council?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak at this public hearing? If you could raise your hand, and I will recognize you.
Yes, Larry.
I think I'd like to ask a question or two, and I can, Wes or Sam can answer this or not. But what is the projected radiation range of these towers? I mean, how far do they think they can project the signal? Right now, our towers are about three miles is what the effective range of what the cell towers we have now. That is the, the two water towers and the one we have at the triangle. And also, what are the frequencies that we're talking about? Are we looking at 800 megahertz frequencies, or are we looking at 1,900 megahertz frequencies? Fall zones, if we, I think the town needs to have a pretty comprehensive fall zone map if we're going to anticipate having these towers put in. I heard a 50-foot fall zone, but I'm hearing that this tower will be 50 foot plus a 10-foot antenna. That's a 60-foot fall zone. And our safety standards in town say that you can't have a structure like that within 60 foot of an occupied building. So I would, I would highly recommend that we look at the town right-of-way where this kind of thing would be allowed. And also, if we, if we have the option of doing so, we need to require that these be erected in a stealth manner. That is, I can see, you know, disguised as pine trees, or something that's not a bare telephone pole with a box on top of it. And also, the number of towers that can be constructed. If we have these towers that are spread apart by, say, 2,000 or 2,500 feet, maybe that will be acceptable. But if we get three or four service providers who want to put up towers, and they find a location that we, that they like, are we going to allow them to have three and four towers in the same location? In other words, are we going to allow four antenna farms? So I think these are the things that we need to think about when we take on this task. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lahon. Anyone else?
I'd like to answer some of Larry's questions.
Can you come up to the mic, Mr. Don? Can you come up to the mic, Mr. Don?
Larry asked about frequencies being used by cell carriers. The FCC had just completed a wireless bandwidth auction and the, the frequencies they've been selling off are actually for VHF and UHF TV frequencies. The cellphone companies are buying them in large quantities throughout the country. So we're talking about all frequencies right now, Larry, and this probably plays into the microcell concept of a lot more towers and much, much closer together. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Don.
Thank you, Mr. Don.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, Mr. Mayor, I'll close the public hearing and I, now I can, I'll get back again now to the areas that we were talking about that you could regulate, but I wanted to point out a couple of things with Mr. Lohan's questions. One thing that's very important about this change is that the very first line says, except as expressly provided in this part, a city shall not prohibit, regulate, or charge for the co-location of small, small wireless facilities. So if it doesn't give you the authority to regulate about it, in these four stapled sections, you can't do it. And one of the things would be FCC regulated bandwidth unless you can, unless you can fit it into this one group of area that we're going to talk about. So if you turn to page nineteen of twenty-five, are the pages right this time, Wes?
Yes.
Okay. Page nineteen of twenty-five, line seven through sixteen are the area that designates, that could allow for some elaboration and more detail about what you could regulate. There are three, there are four areas here. One, building code. Well, you're already going to probably regulate on the building code. That's what the town's applicable codes is and they went and defined applicable codes as basically the building codes that apply to the town jurisdiction. Number two, it's town code of ordinance provisions or regulations that concern public safety, objective design standards for decorative utility poles, city utility poles, or reasonable and non-discriminatory stealth and concealment requirements, including screening or landscaping for ground-mounted equipment. Number three, public safety and reasonable spacing requirements concerning the ground look, the location of ground-mounted equipment in a right-of-way. Or four, the historic preservation requirements. So you, you may be able to, under four, keep it from being put on a property that's been designated historic.
Like Sam said.
Yeah. But the spacing that's in here is not for the utility poles, it's for ground-mounted equipment. And so you don't have the ability to regulate the utility poles. When you get back to the section about utility poles, it pretty much says that they can put utility poles wherever they want to. On, in, on your property, on public rights-of-way. So the, the, the most room for consideration is probably this section II, which talks about ordinance provisions and regulations concerning public safety, objective design standards for decorative utility poles, city utility poles, or reasonable and non-discriminatory stealth and concealment requirements. So let's start with reasonable and non-discriminatory stealth and concealment requirements. I think this would be a great place for you to elaborate on stealth and concealment requirements, but throwing in the non-discriminatory makes it much more complicated because that means to me, what they're trying to say is, you got to apply that to everybody else, the cable company, trying to apply that to the cable and to the power, all the utility pole, everybody else. It's not non-discriminatory for these small wireless facilities between different companies because clearly the ordinance, if it's in existence, it's going to apply to everybody. They wouldn't expect you to put one that says Verizon can do it this way and AT&amp;T can do it that way. So I don't think that's what they're talking about for non-discriminatory. And based on some other provisions in the eight pages that are here, I'm not, I can't find it off the top of my head, but there's some other non-discriminatory provisions where it's, they're essentially saying, we know that in towns, take, you don't have a whole lot of utility poles already.
Right.
So, yeah, but towns like Hurtford, maybe Edington have power distribution systems and they've got power poles everywhere and they are town-owned poles. And they, they have to let whatever telecommunications, you know, real phone providers and cable providers just get to tack on. That's part of what they get to do, they've got the, their statutes that let them do that. And I think that's where this non-discriminatory is going, is if you're going to have, if you're going to make this group of folks hide their stuff, you're going to have to start trying to make everybody else hide their stuff. And right now you don't have an ordinance related to that. There could, this could be an opportunity to make everybody have to hide their stuff, but I don't know that you'll be able to do that ultimately. And then, so we'll backtrack to the next ones about objective design standards for decorative utility poles, city utility poles. It design, it defines city utility poles. Like I said, they got pretty detailed. City utility pole is a pole owned by a city in the city right-of-way that provides lighting, traffic control, or similar function. So currently you don't have anything that regulates the look or design of city utility poles. If you passed a regulation, it wouldn't be just for this, it would have to apply to all city utility poles, whatever ones that are out there and whatever ones are added in the future. So then backing up, the same thing would apply to decorative utility poles and, and like, I think it was Mr. Williams said, I, I'm not sure exactly what a decorative utility pole is, but that's the only thing, the only thing that's not defined by the statute is a decorative utility pole. But that's the area where you have some regulatory authority. And then backtracking to the, the one that's probably the, the most interesting is ordinance provisions that, or regulations that concern public safety. I think that the biggest problem there with regard to the utility poles is you don't have fall zones for utility poles that already exist.
Right.
So it's, you're going to have to find some basis for not being arbitrary and capricious in picking utility poles that are being installed pursuant to this ordinance.
Could it, could it be as simple though as requiring that a structural engineer certify that it can meet one hundred and thirty mile an hour winds, just like every other structure?
We don't have that.
We have it for buildings.
Well, we don't have it on our utility poles.
How many utility poles do we have down?
Does the town have any utility poles?
Yes.
Well, yeah, Dominion has many.
Well, Dominion's different.
Right.
But, well, but there are some, what I'm saying is there are some within the, some within the street right-of-ways. Some are located where they.
They belong to Dominion and we don't have to.
Well, if they belong to Dominion, they've got to have Dominion's permission to put, to get on them, but then they've still got to apply, comply with the ordinance in terms of the square footage of the small wireless facility and stuff like that. But what it took away was if you have a utility pole, it's a, if it's a town-owned utility pole in the town's right-of-way, then you can't, you can't stop them from doing it. Dominion can say, Dominion might be able to say, you can't put it on our pole.
We, yeah, we have this pole.
They might, they, they might have another statute that interacts between them.
We don't have any as far as the town.
I don't think so.
Do we have to?
I don't think so.
Can we make a?
I mean, the only thing, we've got some lights going down the street.
Yeah, those don't.
Can they put them on lights?
But those aren't tall enough.
They can put them on lights?
I think so, I mean, it's a utility.
And you require, but if somebody put a light in, you're going to require that it meets the wind code, right, Wes?
One of the, one of the requests from one of the facilities is, is about tees on the avenues, first, second, and third, and all wind thirteen.
Think about why?
Tees.
There's, there are utility poles owned by Dominion, there's areas, that one, that from thirteen over there, they're looking at all those utility poles. They're all owned by Dominion.
And then the definition of a city utility pole is a pole. It doesn't say it's of a certain type, but a pole owned by a city in the city rights-of-way that provides lighting, traffic control, or a similar function. So if you have a light pole, that's a city-owned light pole, if you have any traffic control poles.
The only ones we have are the LEDs, that'll have poles and a solar panel on a pole down here by the.
So most likely it's going to be Dominion poles and they'll need Dominion's permission to get on them and they'll have to show you that, but they'll still have to comply with the rest of this.
But we're not discriminating if they're different from Dominion poles, are, are we, if we require a stealth? If we require some, we're, we're not discriminating if we don't own the pole, are we? If we have an ordinance that says, make it look like a pine tree?
Wait, but you're going to have to make them all look like, I mean, when Dominion comes to put in a pole, you're going to have to make them, make it look like a pine tree.
Okay.
So what we're trying to do is get Dominion to take those out.
Yeah, and I think, and, and this is where, this is another can of worms that I am worried about opening up, is if, and this is something I mentioned at the planning board, my recollection is that there was a lawsuit between Dominion and the town of Killdoble Hills over some very large power poles that are now ultimately along the highway in Killdoble Hills.
Right.
Because Dominion had the authority to decide what kind of poles they wanted and where they wanted them. So I'm not sure, at this point, whether or not you would have the authority to force Dominion, some other owner, to do their poles a certain way. So I'm not sure that there's an ability to be non-discriminatory.
How, how many poles are we talking about?
But now, when Dominion came in to use our right-of-way down on whatever, on that Hickory, their, they said, their plan is to, as they upgrade over the next five to seven years, is to remove all the poles into other chores and to go underground. I mean, that's what he, we had him in here, I don't know when he was in here.
I, I remember hearing that.
And he said, their plan was to remove all those poles and to put everything underground because I guess with storms and wind and everything, it's cheaper for them to have it underground, they have less response than they do in places where they don't have it underground. And it's easy to dig.
But if, if Dominion's already saying they're willing to phase it out over five years, I mean, what that leads to is, why can't we, over the period of five years, ban all poles, not be discriminatory?
And, and another thing, backing up, it is, I don't think this is.
Why not be discriminatory?
The stealth is not for the pole. Because this is in a section related to the facility. I think the stealth is for the facility that's on the pole.
But, but if, but if, if public safety is compromised by the fact, Dominion would agree that these poles are in a high wind zone and they could, they could cause damage, just say that we are not allowing any poles at all in the town. And then you can't single, and then Dominion give a five-year grace period on those folks who already have their poles. And would that, is that even permissible?
That would require me to go back and look at, look at that.
Well.
And, and, and take this ordinance as being put in front of you to, to get this moving, but this section here that, that allows for the only thing that says, these are, and the statute says, these are the only reasons you can deny an application for.
Right.
I didn't want to presume any kind of concept of what would fill in any of those blanks, so I, I left it very broad as it was in the statute. But clearly if there are more details that you want investigated or a particular direction that you want investigated there, then I can do that and we could bring it back to you again.
Okay, let me ask, on, on the fall zone, for example, all right, Dominion has utility poles, could we look at that and include a fall zone as far as a public safety issue into an ordinance, into this ordinance so that we have some teeth on it? They can't just put it, I mean, you got houses down Dogwood that are less than sixty feet from the road and the right-of-way is right on those houses. As an example, I mean, we have it up there too. Could we do that? I mean, could we look at something like that?
I can look into that if you'd like. I, I think, I mean, I think, like I said, the, the biggest issue is going to be if two poles are similar and you have a regulation that relates to one and doesn't, and don't have one that relates to another, you, you're being arbitrary and capricious about who you're, about why that exists. What someone will say is, no, you're not doing this for really a fall zone problem because you've got fall zones everywhere that you're not protecting. You're doing this to stop these facilities from coming. It's a, it's an end around of what, what it's trying to do. So I think you have to come up with a, you know, I would have to see if you can regulate Dominion's poles. And it would have, you'd have to be able to go farther than just regulating these.
And Dominion, if they're, if they're agreeable and they want to get rid of them anyways, then that's something that, you know.
Let's, let's clarify that a little bit. The only thing that Dominion talked to us about was addressing certain specific areas, mainly on streets like Beachtree and along the canal system, where they had problems with access to their particular lines, not so much to accommodate us, but to accommodate them. They didn't mention taking away the poles along the beachfront. We'd ask about that, but that was not part of the discussion they had with us at that meeting here.
And, but once they find out that they have to let these other companies use their poles.
Well, they may not have to, they may have, they may have their own rules about that.
But, but maybe that's worth, if, if they find out that they do.
Well, then you have a pole beside a pole.
Exactly. And that's worse almost. And they, but they may not want these other companies plugging in to their poles, which they may say, we'll put them underground.
They're, they're going to want them to plug in, they're just not going to want them to plug.
Okay, I'm sure there's other communities like us that have utilities underground. Do they have, do these companies, these wireless groups, I know, this is like if you go into a major city that got, got them on side to buildings so that you don't turn the corner and you lose service. So do they have options for communities like us? I mean, what are the, the options from those companies? I'm sure they've looked into that. Because there's communities across the nation that, you know, everything's underground, everything, all their utilities, they don't want it up.
Yeah.
I know this doesn't give you the option there, but I'm asking for options, I guess.
Which, which sounds like we're pretty close to being.
And you know, in five years, five years, this may all be obsolete anyway because, you know, 5G's coming and in order to get it, you got to allow these little repeater stations. We all, we're usually the last one to get stuff. I think that this whole ordinance raises so many questions, you know, one question I have is, I'm making this up, nobody's proposing this, but if we decided to widen the road on East Dogwood up there, and, so we do it, and then they come in, or no, let's just say they come in and put a pole up and then we need to widen that road, who pays for moving the pole? You know, so is that a regulatory option for us as to tell them where within that right-of-way or on that hill or wherever, you know, that they can place that pole?
Pinkness, right, yeah. Like if, if Dominion, if we go in and widen Wax Myrtle.
I'd have to go back and look at, we'd have to go back and look at Dominion's easement or property rights in that right-of-way. I mean, it's, I'm, basically, I'm up, that's the first thought in my mind, we have to go back and look at what rights they have in the right-of-way.
And you've already got it, there is a provision on, I thought there was, on page twenty-three of twenty-five that, that the city, they're going to use the city's right-of-ways, they have to comply with the chapter twenty-eight undergrounding requirements prohibiting the installation of above-ground structures in the town's right-of-way without prior approval. So there's already a, um, there's already. there's already a provision there about how you place things within the right-of-way.
Can, yeah, I mean. Can I go ahead and make a motion, so this could probably go on forever?
To approve ZTA 1802 as presented to us?
No.
Come on, Chris.
I'm not there yet, but to make a motion to table this and ask Ben to look at what it would take to, on regulatory level, remove all poles in the town moving forward, and that if Dominion wanted a, a new pole, they would have to comply with the new rules. And then, now, we may find out that's not possible, or, and then reach out to Dominion to say, um, find out what they, what their plan of attack is on the poles, on their poles. And what do you think? I just don't want to sit and spin our wheels. Either we vote on it, vote yes on it, or we, we get more information.
I'll second your motion. And the reason is, is because this is so bloody complicated here, that, you know, that I'd like to look through it and ask these theoretical questions and listen to your questions and, and what does this mean, you know? But I think in the long run, though, they've got to spy the chin hairs.
So Ben, question, before we do, do we have really any options?
Yes, I mean, I, I think in that, in that one area where the statute says, what the statute says is a city may deny an application only on the basis that it does meet, does not meet the following, and it gave you those four things, if you can find something that is a valid regulatory reason that fits into those four things and it's something you want to do, then we can, we can try and fit that in there. But I think that's the important part, is that it says, may deny an application only on the basis of, and it's gotta be within those four things. What I've got here to, to probably look at is regulatory authority to remove all poles or be, have no poles, to look at the fall zone concept and see if there's a way to put that in there for, for the poles. And maybe something for, in the area of the right-of-way, reg authority about the distance from the pavement and, and how, you know, because you could have a public safety issue related to, just, so you're in the right-of-way, but you need to be 10 feet from the pavement or 15 feet from the pavement or something like that. But those are the areas where I could see.
That would put them on private property, which they.
Well, they can put the poles on private property if they have permission.
Well, that's true.
That's fine, yeah. But what, what's unique about our situation in my mind is that we are in a high wind zone. It's, you know, you don't have that situation in other areas, and, and all across our codes and all across our zoning, we're taking that into account and we're asking people to do extraordinary measures to do that. And so, so that might be the public safety angle that.
Well, the question too there is, is there a building permit required to put the pole in? And, or is there a building permit required to put the structure on top of the pole? And if so, the building code's gonna probably regulate whatever.
Then that's one of the questions to look at, yes.
Because it does have, you know, that it has to meet the building code. But the question is, does the building code apply at all? I, I will say that this is very much like the, you can't regulate based on bedrooms problem. This is, trying to read through this ord, this statute, this whole statutory scheme was, just trying to figure out what they're talking about at all is very close to impossible.
So in all reality, we're gonna do the research, we're gonna come back here, and as Tom suggested, we're gonna revert to it.
I think our hands are essentially tied, I don't, I don't like, like the fact our hands are tied, but I think they are, excuse me, I think our hands are tied, I just, do we want to, we want to have Ben spend X number of hours researching this for us and come back and tell us, okay, here's what you can and can't do, and right where we are sitting right now?
I guess my own question to Ben, is there any reasonable way to, to, I'll go with, I'll withdraw my motion if you think there's no reasonable way we can get rid of all poles to stop this, to not be nondiscriminatory. If you don't feel like in your, if you don't feel like there's no wiggle room, there's any wiggle room in that, then there's no point in having you spend your time in doing it, and I'll go with, I'll withdraw my motion.
I don't know what, I mean, I don't have any, I've never looked at anything like that. My expectation is that you won't be able to do that, just on the basis that typically cable company, I mean, there are federal, I know there are federal regulations that just allow cable companies and phone companies to do all sorts of things with, with right-of-ways that you wouldn't have wanted them to do, but they can do anyway. But I'm not sure if that includes placing poles, if they have, if there's some sort of requirement to put them underground. So that, that may be an authority that, that exists, but I.
You don't think so?
I'm thinking 65% no, 35% yes.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion then.
Thank you. I think Larry had a question or.
One question, Ben. What other towns on the beach doing about this regulation?
I don't know that it much, many of them are doing anything, y'all, y'all are ahead of the curve of the ones that I deal with. Others are looking at it, but haven't put anything on paper yet.
Also, this whole thing about telecommunications first started, we talked about towers as a commercial enterprise, and what they've done is they've moved the commercial enterprise to a utility, and utilities and commercial enterprises are regulated entirely differently. So now that they've got regulations for utilities, we're pretty much stuck.
Yeah, and I, that's the best reading that I could get out of reading the statutory changes and, and the statutes that they had in the past. There's also, if you recall, when we adopted the initial telecommunications tower stuff, there's a lot of federal case law that probably had, puts less limitations on, on them than the, sometimes I've read the statutes and said, I don't know if you can, I don't know if the state can do that. I don't know if the state can let us do that, because there are some federal requirements that, there've been cases where they said, no, you can just put as many of them as they need to, because this is something that, that they're a utility and they get to do. So it's a very, it's a much more complicated area of the law than it seems, and the General Assembly has done a great job of adding to that.
Tom, did you have a motion?
I had a motion earlier that I was gonna present, and that was to go ahead and approve ZTA 18-02 as presented to us.
I'll second your motion, Tom.
Thank you, Gary. Do I, any further, any further discussion, council? All in favor?
I don't feel real good about voting on an ordinance if we don't have all the information. How can you make a decision? And I've heard numerous questions tonight, but haven't heard a lot of answers other than they probably can, or they probably can. Is there any way we could get more information, contact other towns and see how they're handling it, and also determine if they've run into problems and how they're resolving them? I mean, just taking this at face value, with all the questions we got, I just don't think it's a good decision. Maybe Chris was right, we should table it, and I'm, I'm not saying, Ben, do, do all the analysis, I think there's some things maybe the town could do, talking to their counterparts in other towns.
I think the biggest problem you're gonna have is it's pretty new.
Nobody's done anything.
It's pretty complicated, and either nobody's adopted it or changed anything, or they hadn't dealt with it, or they haven't litigated it, you know? Yeah, I mean, if you hadn't, if, if nobody's gotten in a fight with a wireless provider, I mean, I, I've dealt with ordinances before, but I've looked at them and said, wow, I don't know that you got the authority to do that, but the guy, the wireless providers are willing to do it? Okay. But.
But if you're saying.
Unless you've found somebody who's fighting about it, you're not gonna answer the details necess, you know, it's gonna be hard to find out what the details are. It's a, it's a, it's a very hard statute to read, it has a lot of twists and turns that, that, that you could, you know, it's like one of the, what were the books you read as a kid where you got to pick, pick your story? There's all sorts of different stories that could happen, and, and I, I think we're just, we're at a really early stage where I'm not sure that you can find out how anybody else has ended the story.
Because nobody knows.
Nobody knows.
Hasn't been.
At least not in North Carolina. I, I haven't looked, North Carolina is usually relatively progressive on telecommunicate, on, at least the wireless telecommunications from my history. So I, I imagine there are some bigger areas that are more progressive about it than, than North Carolina, but I don't know how much different it's gonna be, how much you can learn there.
So basically what you're saying, we just have to wait and see if it's tested?
Yeah, or, you know, it, it might be worth passing this to, to let Wes be able to deal with the few that he's got and see if it's something that, are they gonna come in and put 800 new power poles in? Are they gonna put two, two six-by-six things on two power poles that already exist? I, I don't, I mean, I just don't know how much, I don't know how much use people are gonna, you know, and entities are gonna make of it. I know they're making, you know, application and consideration at multiple towns along the, along the beach, but unless Wes has anything different, I haven't heard of anybody who's getting many more, many more poles to be requested than, than you've had.
I talked with Andy Gorman with the town of Nax, they're working, starting to work on it, because they receive requests, but they haven't, like you said, they haven't put anything down yet. And requests, preliminary requests I've seen were involving existing utility poles at the ends of the avenues on, you know, the ocean side, as well as the Chick Hall Creek. New utility poles on Chick Hall, Chick Hall Creek.
To, to add to, I, I mean, I'm thinking like, I don't love this either, Fred, but I, but I also would say that we could monitor it, and maybe we as a council could ask Wes to monitor what's going on, and we could change our mind later as we get more information if we want to more closely.
We always go back and revisit it.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's my point. I mean, let's, let's let somebody else pay the initial legal bills to, to fight it, and then let's go from there, if that makes sense.
Good idea.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve ZTA 1802 as presented, we've had a lot of discussion about it, and that motion's been seconded. I'd like to ask now for, for, for a vote to approve ZTA 1802 as presented. All in favor? Aye. Aye, aye. Anyone opposed? Both just made in carrying, Sheila. Unanimously. General public, uh, let's see, are we through with that one? Do you want to close the public comment?
It's already closed.
Tom, let's direct Wes to look into others and see what regulations, including costs for disturbance of right-of-way and what other people are doing, and bring that back to us as soon as, as he possibly can, as far as looking at options. Because I'm sure in North Carolina, there's other communities that have tried to restrict this and see what they can and can't do.
Did you hear that, Wes?
Do you have the options for calls to send to town right-of-way from other communities?
That, plus if they can restrict poles or whatever they're doing, if anybody's able to do that, or at least what type of step-type poles they're using, and bring that back to us.
And maybe even, since you are administering the building code too, what sort of building code, you know, if we can require them to do, hire an engineer to prove that their pole meets the wind code, and they discourage it, you know, even though it's, even, it may cost them $500, anything to discourage it in terms of adding costs is not a bad thing.
And, you know, like, I'm sure they've put restrictions on what type of fees we can charge them to do these things, but at least make them jump through the hoops that anybody else would have to do.
You got that, Wes?
And also removal, if they decide they don't want to upkeep, make sure they have to remove them.
Um, Mr. Mayor, just clarified, the council does not want the town attorney to proceed with any kind of research on those issues at this point, is that correct?
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
With my motion.
And there is a provision already, Mr. McDonald, about removal if they abandon.
Did you hear that?
Sometimes they just disappear, companies, companies disappear, you know?
General public comment, anybody else want to speak? In fact, there's nobody else signed up, thank you. We'll close the public comment. I have, I've kept you guys here long enough tonight, but I have two or three things I want to discuss real quickly, under the mayor's comments. Uh, the recent storm did do, did do some, I don't know how much damage, the sun damage to our, to our newly, newly-built beach on the south end. Don't know how serious, a more serious problem may well be the, the sound front near the North Marina, we have trees undermined and quite a bit of, quite a bit of shoreline loss over there, area we've talked about now for the last couple of years to address, that's civic association obviously issue, but it's, it impacts us, many of us, because that's a, that's a very heavily used site. Uh, last Wednesday ago, week ago, I went to the ARPO meeting with, Mr. Haskett was there also in Hartford. Among the items discussed there were the continuing need to address the condition of, and or ultimate replacement of the Allegheny River Bridge on Route 64, which has been a problem for, for years. Interesting, interesting thing came up, the creation of a future I-87, Interstate I-87 using Route 17 and the North Carolina Route 64 corridor between Tidewater, Virginia, the concept being between Norfolk and Raleigh. North Carolina's long-range highway plans show this, Virginia does not show the same level of interest. In other words, once 17 gets to the Virginia line, it kind of stops there, it's no longer an interstate. So there's going to be some, some, some effort made on the part of both states to decide how they're gonna manage that. The Biddy Currytuck Bridge, the most recent up bid on that is that the record of decision is due within a few months, to move forward or not. We can, we can and should expect continuing challenges to this effort by the SELC, this is from that meeting. Finally, the passenger ferry service between Harris and Ocracoke should begin mid to late summer. They had hoped to do that earlier, but they had some problems with the construction of the, of the pier and the, and the landing area down on, 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 on Ocracoke. They, they had two contractors that bid it, neither one of them could do the work, so they had to kind of back away from that a little bit. And that's all I have tonight, thank you. Mr. Mason?
No comments.
Mr. McDonald? Here we go to Jim. All right, I will. Fred?
I don't have anything.
Jim?
I've got two things, one of them is the Capitol Improvements Infrastructure Committee met in February, and it was at that meeting that we asked the committee, the CIP committee members to go down Fairway Drive and look at the condition of that street so that the town can properly respond to the people who sent us that correspondence. So that has not been dropped, that is, we're working on it right now, and hopefully we'll have some kind of answer or recommendation at the council level within a month. Anyway, the second thing I wanted to mention was this, that since, during the month of February, I got this weird notion in my head, and then I started attending a council member or a council meeting, or commissioner meeting, whatever it's called, in all of our sister communities, including Currytuck County. I've been to at least one meeting in every community except for Dare County and Mantio. And the reason I was doing this is Ben mentioned the old children's story, well, this is going back to an old children's song, "The bear went over the mountain to see what he could see." And that's been my only purpose in going to these things, is just to see how they conduct their meetings, what they're talking about, and all kinds of things. And I'm finding some very interesting things. What I'm, what I'd like to do, what my plan is, is to go ahead and summarize what I've seen and heard and, you know, all this stuff, and pass it around to council, make it publicly available, because there are some tweaks to our own that we might consider. I'm not advocating any, but there are some differences that we might want to look at. But anyway, I'll come back again with more on that, but suffice it to say, February was a very busy time attending public meetings, and if I hear, no offense to her, but if I hear Karen Brown's presentation on affordable housing one more time, I'm gonna scream. Anyway.
Thank you. Gary?
Make a motion with the chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Meeting's adjourned.